Seven o'clock, Monday, June 17, 2019. Welcome to all of you at the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council. Val is our clerk this evening because Carla is off all week for a wedding this coming weekend, I believe. So, Val, if you take roll call, please.
Here.
President.
Here.
Walstein.
Here.
Rothie.
Here.
Mackenzie.
Here.
Cherry.
Present.
Well, President accounted for. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion?
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of minutes for the May 20, 2019 study session meeting and the minutes of the June 3, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of minutes from May 20 and June 3.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion? All those in favor of minutes from May 20 and June 3, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes from June, May 20 and June 3 are approved. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation congratulating the Lions Club on their 75th anniversary. They had the privilege of attending their dinner and meeting Friday evening. I must apologize right off the bat because I didn't catch it. We had a wrong date and so Val was gracious enough and printed a new one with the right date on it. Proclamation goes as this: Whereas this year marks the 75th anniversary of the Waverly Lions Club established June 13, 1944, and whereas observance of this occasion provides the opportunity to extend the appreciation our community feels for the many valuable contributions made by the Waverly Lions Club to the citizens of Waverly, and whereas through the years this club has demonstrated in many ways its acceptance of a role of responsibility in the economic and social growth of our community and its long record of accomplishment deserves public expression of appreciation, and whereas we gratefully acknowledge the influence for good accomplished by neighbors and friends of the Waverly Lions Club who have contributed so much in the way of leadership, personal service, and social assistance to the community during these past 75 years. Now therefore, I Dean Soash, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Waverly, Iowa, do hereby present this proclamation to the Waverly Lions Club, extending my personal congratulations and also those of the Waverly City Council on the 75th anniversary, and further urge all of our citizens to be cognizant of the many contributions of this organization through these many years. Witness my hand and see the official seal of the City of Waverly, Iowa, the 17th day of June 2019. Would entertain a motion to accept the proclamation?
I would move approval of the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just to remind the public, there was a tremendous article in the Waverly paper last week listing all of their activities. Most of us see the pancake breakfasts and shelter houses that they assisted building and maybe some of the I wear that they collect and redistribute, but I was not aware of all they were involved in and it is an extensive list. So, thank you for all that you and the club does. All those in favor of the proclamation, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Proclamation is hereby given. Thank you. I need a couple of signatures on there and I'll have Val mail it. Can you mail it to them, Val? Very good, thank you. We'll get you a corrected copy.
Okay. Thank you very much for the support that you're showing to the Lions and coming to our fundraisers. It helps you be a part of what we do in the community and hundreds of Lions through the 75 years. So, behalf of the club, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
There are a lot of merit pages on there.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. For any item not on the agenda, comments to five minutes per person unless you request additional time.
Good evening, Matthew Schneider, Ward 5.
That's what I found.
I didn't find that. I've had some notes here. And I guess first of all, on the preemption equipment, glad to see that is on there, the new traffic lights that is on the consent calendar tonight. I would hope that we break that off of the consent calendar and/or have a toll to give full study session on traffic signals. I think that may be beneficial for everyone. What I wanted to talk about was really what Mayor Soash, you know, I think had a good comment on the radio this morning in regards to four lanes and the crowd that was here last week. And, you know, I think it was the phrase, "I understand where they are coming from." Then went on to say, "But they've been told from day one unless something drastic happens." To get one of the council members that voted for three lanes to bring up a revote, it's not going to happen. So, I'd like to just run through some of those drastic things that have happened since the implementation. We've had reports of over half a dozen incidences of emergency responders being stuck or slowed in traffic. I got to talk to an out-of-town one, an out-of-town person who's driven it in emergency situations between both configurations, and their word amongst other evidence is very clear to me. It was also, here's another, you know, I think that's pretty drastic. It was also learned that traffic feasibility study was flawed among the flaws, two left-hand turn lanes onto fourth that are needed for this to work and to get level of service to a reasonable level. That's pretty drastic. Traffic study counts showed most intersections, Level A or B, but obviously what we've witnessed from the beginning is Level of Service F. I think that's pretty drastic. It was learned that the DOT is using $1,500 in over crashes only to claim a crash reduction. By undercounting, annualizing, and weighing up against 10-year-old crash data, a rate drop can be demonstrated, but all crashes should be counted. So, I think that's pretty drastic. Crashes by all honest measures are up. They're not up huge. We do see a crash shift severity slide, and I think Ms. Cashman, you alluded to that last week. There's a slide down. That's common, that happens. Pedestrians and cyclists have all noted to us that this is less safe. I think that's pretty drastic. The overwhelming majority of the citizens tell us that it's less safe. I think that's drastic. Access issues arising from both congestion and lack of left-turn access, they've impacted some businesses pretty negatively, some severely. Those that are relying upon casual traffic and transportation, they're the most severely impacted. That is pretty drastic. The DOT or the city didn't consult with fire code officers or fire department or anything like that. I think that's pretty drastic. The DOT claimed that response time with three lane has improved a bit. When we asked for the evidence of the studies that'll back up that claim, it was stated that the evidence is anecdotal. Anecdotal evidence. I think that's pretty drastic. And we've already had thousands of residents petition against this. I think that's pretty drastic. So, it appears that we, what we have going on here is not in the best interest of Waverly. It's not for the citizens. It's not for the people. So, I would just like council to think on this, remember the anecdotal evidence, talk with emergency responders, and remember what you should always do is not for Group A or Group B, but for the people. Thanks.
We're going to break our policy a little bit. Okay, go ahead.
Jim Hunley, 401 Second Avenue Southwest. I've been pretty quiet about this road diet, but as a businessman, I've got trucks running up and down this street. And I know there's other people on this that's mayor, council, that probably pay their employees' wages by the hour. When I have GPS tracking on my vehicles and I can see them sitting here 10 to 15 minutes, two guys, maybe once or twice a day, that adds up. What about the people that, you know, have to go from one end of town to the other end of town to make an appointment? Okay? They have to leave 15 minutes earlier so they can get there. Okay? So, what happens to that 15 minutes they have to take off work earlier? You people just don't realize that, you know, this road diet is something you guys want it. Nobody else in town does. I sat at my station a week and a half ago and I had people signing a petition about this. There was three people out of 100 that didn't want to sign it. I don't see where you guys think that everybody in town or that the majority of the people want a three lane. So, just think about the pocketbook, okay? And also another thing, we're worried about spending money. And I got thinking after our last meeting, okay, we're doing traffic studies by the DOT. And after the traffic study, okay, we're going to set the timing on lights. Who's paying for this? Where's this, who's paying DOT people to come and do this study? We are. You are, and we are too. Plus, the Waverly Light and Power people, they get involved. So, Waverly Light and Power, they pay their people pretty good wages to go out and change these lights. And if it doesn't work, oh, we'll try something else. Let's get this figured out. And why did it take from, you know, we knew this problem December, January. Why has it taken since June to talk about, oh, we're going to change the light timing? I want to know why. And I want to know how much money that we're paying the DOT due to these studies. That's all I've got to say about that subject. The other subject I've got is when the Fourth Street Southwest by our house got redone a few years ago, and our yard had to be re-landscaped because of the height of the road. I was promised that our property stakes would be replaced because we had to add about a foot and a half of dirt. Now, if I want to find my property stakes, I have no way to find them. Mr. Cherry, this gentleman here, both know that I've been asking them about doing that. And still, nothing happens. WHKS has left town, they've got their money, they care less about coming back to town. So, I hope to see some action on that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments for anything that's not on the agenda? As I started to say, kind of break the rules a little bit. What Mr. Schneider said is not anything new to this council. I knew about surveys that were being taken all over town. A lady was here last summer, about a year ago, because there was a survey out. And her comment was, because she had taken some class at UNI, which is fine, but surveys don't mean an awful lot. I guess I would tend to do that with whatever has been taken. Mr. Shear shared with me today a heavily traveled road between St. Paul and Minneapolis, I believe it is. There was two fatalities recently on that among several pedestrian fatalities. Presently four lane, it's going to be converted to three lane along with some other ones in Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area. Your choice on your next move, because you have publicly stated that you're going to visit Governor Reynolds and the DOT in Des Moines. When you do, I ask that you contact KWWL-TV so that we get full coverage on the news. We just went through that with them trying to promote what we did wrong in Waverly. But that's your next move. I will contribute to your expenses if you need me to. But until then, we're done with road diet conversations in this council, at these council meetings, until someone brings it up from the council or the city or the DOT. That's all I have to say. Next item on the agenda, favorite request from HTS Architects is the consent calendar. Favorite request from HTS Architects for the Waverly Senior Housing, 420 Building, project for the amount of $3,0295 to be paid by Waverly Senior Housing. Favorite request from State Construction Incorporated for the Waverly Senior Housing, 420 Building, project for the amount of $190,246.99 to be paid by Waverly Senior Housing. Favorite request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Municipal Airport, Runway 29 Extension, design bidding services for the amount of $6,483. Favorite request from Snyder and Associates for the Fourth Street Southwest Reconstruction 2020 Project for the amount of $16,775.47. Favorite request from Iowa Appraisal and Research Corporation for the Airport Land Acquisition 2012 for the amount of $3,500. Purchase of three traffic signal vehicle detection cameras from General Traffic Controls of Spencer, Iowa for $56,550. A Class E liquor license for Walgreens, a Class B beer permit for Waverly Heritage Days. Entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I will move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion by the council?
I do have an issue actually with the, I'm not exactly sure why the purchase of three traffic signal vehicle detection cameras is in the consent calendar, because I don't believe that we have voted on that in the past as a purchase item. I'm thinking that should probably be a separate item. I'm not opposed to it, I just, from a policy standpoint, I'm not sure that that is really appropriate in the consent calendar.
It's a capital item that is within the budget that was established for the fiscal 20 budget, and we have been putting those on the consent agenda as long as they're within budget and were discussed during the budget process. That's the reason it's on there.
This is just replacement. This isn't new.
Right. I guess I don't remember seeing one of those on the consent calendar in the past.
That's probably because we don't do that very often.
That might be.
Yeah, these are not common and we're replacing them constantly.
Sure. Like I said, I have no problem with the purchase. I was just wondering why that was on the consent calendar, not a separate item.
Similar to when there's a truck purchase or something that's within the budget.
Yeah, we've been putting capital items on that are within budget as long as they were part of the original budget. If they're over or an emergency, then we pull them out separate. But in the past, well, since this year, we've kind of been putting those on as they go. This was just another example.
I guess that's true. I do recall now that we've had some vehicle purchases that we've had on consent calendar.
But you have, I mean, you have the prerogative to pull it out.
No, I, like I said, I'm not opposed to that. I was just wondering why it was on consent calendar, because I don't remember, I hadn't, didn't remember seeing items of that type on the consent calendar before, where we hadn't really specifically budgeted an item or budgeted an amount for that specific item.
It's possible that the last ones, and I don't know for sure when they were purchased, but it would be possibly four years in my terms.
That's quite.
On the council.
Sure. All right. Well, no, I'll withdraw my objection to it. I have no problem going through with it. I apologize for taking up the council's time.
And again, just for public, this is replacement. We're not, these aren't resinking or doing, anything on these, this is just replacing what's there, right?
It's independent of any other issues.
Any of the other that's been discussed, yeah.
Right. The existing camera systems are obsolete, and so we've been kind of at times cannibalizing them to maintain parts for the others that we continue to have. So, we replaced three of them last year, replacing three this coming fiscal year, and we will continue to do that for, I think, three more years after this. So, we're staggering them, spacing them out, but, you know, we do have, I believe it's 14 that we have to upgrade and replace.
I do have a question, Mike. Reading the supporting documents, these cameras count cars and take pictures and all kinds of good things like that?
Yes. And if they're, if they have fiber optic available to them, you can even assign an IP address so that you can web-based application, you know, law enforcement and public services can monitor them in real time. I'm not sure if that is activated at this point. I know that Waverly Utilities does have fiber to one or two, and they have access to it. But going forward, we see this as a system that has many more capabilities than we are presently taking advantage of.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion on this consent calendar?
Just a comment. I thought James's clarification of the parameters for what goes on the consent calendar was helpful. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Okay. All those in favor of the consent calendar as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Consent calendar is hereby approved. Regular Business, Resolution 19-104, approving a professional services agreement with Midland GIS Solutions LLC. Entertain a motion?
I'll move approval, approve Resolution 19-104, approving a professional services agreement with Midland GIS Solutions LLC for the data collection, creation, and construction of a utility GIS program for the amount of $211,564.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
We do have Erin Allen from Midland GIS here. If there's any questions, comments, any particular topic you'd like to discuss, she is here, willing to have that.
Maybe helpful just to kind of maybe explain the process that we'll be going through and what the end results will be.
I'm not reading this because I'm going to talk a long time. I'm getting nervous. Yes, thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. Again, as James said, I'm Erin Allen with Midland GIS. And we have visited with staff regarding the creation of a utility data collection and GIS system that would allow us to go out with survey grade and do collection on the sewer water and stormwater systems in Waverly, which would include full topside inspections on those structures from a condition assessment standpoint, and then the drawing of everything in the GIS environment that would be conducive to asset management, daily operations and maintenance, economic development, as well as being in a format that engineering could use for design and build standards. Basically, what our crews would do is go out throughout the community and go to each and every structure, open up the inlets and the grates and the manholes in the storm and sewer systems, give those a ranking that we have worked with Iowa DNR, IAMU, and Iowa Rural Water to give those a condition assessment, and then add all the information that the city staff fills will benefit in managing and assessing the deterioration over time for capital improvements such as pipe sizes, pipe types, materials, all of the high accurate precision footages and linear distances, things that can all be utilized in any capital improvement project that the city will undertake.
Sounds like an overwhelming task to me.
Well, we're, I mean, that's what we specialize in, so we're very unique, and that's what our guys do all the time, day in, day out, so.
Yeah, about a year and a half ago, we had a sewer problem at our house, and no one knew where the sewer lines ran and how our house was connected to it. So, in some of the older parts of town, the records are not terribly well adapted to putting them on some kind of a system, so.
Yeah, and it does vary from community to community. Sometimes we walk in and we have a good start on some information, which we have some good information to start here at Waverly, and sometimes we have absolutely nothing going into communities. So, we sure appreciate when we've got a group that has had some information we can build on, and that's definitely a benefit to the city, just starting with any contractor.
This is a budgeted item.
Yes, sir. There's a nice presentation, I think, during our budget session, Mike and the staff.
Impressive.
And this GIS system right now, it's just being used for the water and the sewer. Eventually, it's going to be expanded to multiple departments. I mean, assuming Leisure Services is going to put all the parks on there and so on and so forth. Is that correct?
That is correct. Each year, we'll give a staff and determine are there additional layers you want to add to this, whether it be emerald ashcore tree placement, sprinkler replacement of the golf course, variances within properties, anything that you can use for planning and zoning, ordinance issues, anything that could be thought of can probably be done. Midland's probably already done it with somebody somewhere.
Okay.
So, does this, this sounds like a comprehensive mapping, and then does this also include then training of our staff to take this over?
Yes, it does. So, we provide training to the staff, and a lot of times what that entails is an overview for any staff that might touch it, because there's always kind of a level of staff that gets in it, looks around, and it doesn't really change anything or edit things or build reports. And then another layer of staff, probably within your public works and management and capacity, that may want to get in there and be able to dive in a little deeper and pull out the details that will be supportive to decision-making. And it is mobile, so it pulls up on any device. The city has full editing rights, and they determine which staff can or can't do that, just so it's not crazy free-for-all. And then, of course, we provide hosting and support.
I didn't get to see the presentation, but is it like a three-dimensional mapping?
It's not, it's going to, it won't look three-dimensional. We do have a feature in there where we build in Google Street View, so that can be pulled up side by side with the actual accurate mapping of where the utilities are within the city on aerial photography. So, we'll actually be pulling in the resources from the GIS for the county as the background for like the partial ownership information, the road center lines, 911, aerial photography. So, all that will be in one place for the city staff.
In those areas where we might not have the most up-to-date records, will we actually be videoing the sewer lines, those type of things to get a better?
Our staff won't video the lines. We will photograph every structure that we touch, including from the topside on the storm and sewer systems. This will help us as we go through and do the inspection. We'll also note the size and material of the pipes, as well as, like I mentioned, the condition assessment. I know it's been used a lot then to narrow down or to support other investigation that's taken place within the utilities to say, okay, these are the places that we need to attack first. Or maybe we've come back and said, okay, this many manholes, the staff at Midland categorized as poor, what is, what's the procedure, what's the next step for the city to identify then? What needs to happen with those? Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Question for James. How many staff are we going to have trained to do the kind of editing side of the software?
I don't think we'll have that many. It'll come out of Mike's area, the public works. You probably have your superintendence potentially. We'll have to figure out just how many we're going to want. We'll have to figure out just how many we're going to want, how many we're going to need to have that access in general. It's not going to be, as you said, a free-for-all for everybody to have access to it. Only certain departments will need to pull it on a report side and then actually edit it or utilize it. You know, there'll be even fewer that do that. So again, we don't have a bunch of mixed information to get there.
I also want to make sure that we have kind of enough memory people that, it would be horrible if all the people who knew how to use this suddenly up and left and we kind of forgot how to use this. So kind of making sure that there's enough people who know how to use it would be a good thing.
We'll always keep a spare person around. That's good. Make sure.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't envy the fellows their job trying to figure out where all those lines are at.
They make us look good. We're pretty lucky to have them, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any other questions, comments? Call, call, vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinko?
Yes.
Cangus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothy?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Resolution 19-104, professional service agreement with Midland GIS is approved. And now Darwin Rittgers and Jess Hamilton from Waverly Heritage Days will update the council on the 2019 celebration events and another little feature that they have brought with them.
I happen to be Darwin Rittgers. I would be Jess. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you just to talk a little bit about where we're at with Heritage Days and what, and what's going to be happening. We have a committee of about 16 people that I can attest that they're very dedicated in, in providing the best activities and, and event for Waverly that we can. Over the last few years, it continues to grow for us. Last year, we had a close estimate that we had nearly 65 different counties in Iowa that represented here and 11 states. We were real proud of those numbers, and we would like to be able to grow upon those even more. Heritage Days overall, as most recent, when we get inquiries from around the state and out of state, I can tell you as of this week, in most of the areas, we've actually doubled the inquiries what we had even last year. So we, we know the popularity is there and growing and people wanting to come and, and making big plans to, to stay all weekend, family reunions and so forth. When you have an opportunity to look through the catalog, that was input by nearly all of our members, and my son Brian Rittgers is the one who basically authored the catalog. They spend many, many, many hours on this, and it literally takes all year for us to, to put this together. We're fortunate this year that we're going to be able to maintain our huge entertainment stage that we had last year, and that was a, a big success, a big draw. And when we started doing inquiries about the various groups that we should bring in in entertainment, it was nearly unanimous that we should bring all of our same people back, and that's been really unusual. But we're proud to say that, that every act that was here last year will be back, and we're anticipating a, a much bigger crowd. Something that you'll see new, we always want to add something, is we've expanded on the family events, the kid events. The Little Princess Party was great, but we're going to do it again, but now we've added a superhero factor with that, which we anticipate being very, very popular. Our Sunday in the Park is going to be expanded, expanded hours there. As far as going through the booklet, one thing we want to note is the Hall of Fame. It's always really popular Friday night. It gets the entire community involved. As, as many of you may have heard, the grand marshals for this year will be Steve Dukey Corson, and our own Tab Ray will be the grand marshals for the parade. The Hall of Fame, the three inductees, the first one will be East Bremer Diner, then KWay Radio, and then we're also going to recognize the 75 years of the Lions Club will be our, our other Hall of Fame inductee. And, and that will be opened up for everybody. Everybody's welcome. We'll have refreshments, a little program with that. And while that's going on, there'll be many other things at the same time. The car show will be going on. I can tell you that we've had over 1,700 inquiries about our car show, which is easily doubled than what we've had in the past. So the interest is there. We will be having music at that same time with Richie Lee and the Fabulous 50s, and then all the events will be open, the kids' events. This year, the United States Army and Air Force is, is joined onboard. They are going to have, they promise to have full displays. They're going to have interactive activities for kids and youth, something that we've never had before. We're really looking for that, forward to that part of the weekend. We, again, will have fireworks, a little bit of a change for this year. They will actually, we're going to be hosting them on the tractor pole area, so it'll actually be ground level with the fairgrounds itself. With that, we've already had that area inspected for not only safety and insurance purposes, but we're real confident that the overall view and the, the reaction to the crowd will be, be much better there. We, I'm talking about the crowd, we have changed a little bit on our security. It's, it's kind of a three-tier security where we are utilizing Chief Purcell and his crew as, as our number one. And then our, our second phase of security is our own staff, our guys that have worked with us for years and are quite familiar with our stage setup and the crowd setup and that sort of thing. And, and then we will have, a third tier is preliminary area where we have part of the college and the rugby team that is going to work those real outside areas as far as funneling people, making sure they come through our main gates the way we, we should have. And, and then we, we don't allow carry-ins and so forth. In the pamphlet and on our Facebook page, we do put on there that everything is potentially subject to search, so if you bring some big bag, you shouldn't be surprised that maybe we have somebody that want to glance through that. But is there anything you want to add, Jess, or?
We have yoga in the park this year. That's going to be amazing. We have yoga three days, so if you like yoga, it's going to be good. It's actually, we're going to do glow-in-the-dark. Jess from Catalyst is going to head that up on Thursday night after the ban that happens on at Coleman Park, so I'm excited for it. You are, but. So we do have some other activities. You know, our art and wine is popular, that's back, our bingo.
You want to talk in the microphone just to make sure people at home can hear you too?
I think I'm loud enough. But we have the yoga, we have art and wine, bingo, some seminars, just a variety of activities that, that are really for everybody. So it should, if you don't find something at our event, then you need to let us know so that we can find something that would match your interests, so.
Yeah, our planning is not complete yet. We still have some things in the works that just haven't 100% materialized, so I, I wouldn't be at liberty to say that at this point for the public. But for us and our committee, planning never stops. So we're already getting the ideas for next year. One thing I failed to mention is always popular is our food vendors, and we have increased that again this year. Last year was amazing with, with some of the vendors that we had, and that'll be increased. We should have 40-plus different food items available. It'll be spread out amongst the entire grounds. They won't just be isolated in one area. So we've received a lot of suggestions, and we try to work with those, and, and we get that continuous, and we literally bring up everything that someone mentions to us because every opinion is important to us. So I'm open for any questions as far as Heritage Days itself go.
Well, I have the pleasure of sitting on the committee as the council liaison, and I will agree with them that they're a hard-working bunch and coming up with new ideas all the time. Do you want to mention the scavenger hunt?
Yes.
And how can people volunteer?
That will be new this year.
If they want to volunteer, how can people do that?
We, we absolutely need volunteers. We have some specific areas where we could use an individual or two, and, and I know that may not be just selling tickets or, or working our beverage tent, but we have other areas on the grounds that, that we do need help with. The scavenger hunt that is mentioned is we will be putting out in that first week of July, the number hasn't been set yet, but 10 to 12 of our posters that'll go along with the Waverly newspaper and the chamber, we're working with the chamber on this, that'll be distributed to various businesses. And then we're going to give about a week to 10 days for individuals to locate our, our posters throughout downtown Waverly. And then there, the paperwork will be submitted to the newspaper for a drawing, and then during the Thursday night event at Coleman, we will be announcing winners there, and we anticipate to have about four winners with that. Just another activity that we can, we can add, and for, for somebody that is interested in that sort of thing, we look forward to having all of it.
Well, and I think a big part of it is to try to draw people to come downtown because we want to support our local businesses, so to get a scavenger hunt, to get people in the businesses, to be looking around in the businesses is really a big part of the scavenger hunt, and what our goal is, is just to get them in those businesses so that we can provide more opportunities for them to shop locally.
And everybody is 100% volunteer. Fortunately, we do have a, a couple of our members that through their employer get, get volunteer credit hours, and the employers will give a slight donation to Heritage Days for them doing the nonprofit work with us. So that's, that's a benefit too, and, and we encourage that, you know, with all of our members.
If anybody would like to volunteer, they can go ahead and contact me via Facebook, via email, our email is waverlyheritagedays@gmail.com. They can get ahold of us on our Facebook page. They can contact me personally. There's also signup.com that we put on our Facebook page that they can go and just sign up. So there's plenty of different ways for them to get ahold of me to sign up for whatever they want to sign up for.
And I just remind people, most of the activities are free. You have great sponsors that pitch in, and, and the vast majority of the activities, no charge, so.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. We're one of the few in Iowa that is nearly 100% free. You don't have to buy a wristband, you don't have to buy tickets, you don't have to do any of that. It's all open, it's all free, it's already taken care of by our committee, and, and we want to keep it that way, so that, so that family can come and enjoy their time. The only expense that there would be is if, if they would want to purchase food items or beverage items would, would be it, yeah. So we're, we're proud of that, and we want to make this a destination point, and I, and I think we're headed in that right direction just by all the inquiries that we're getting. So I, I really think that it's important, not only for Heritage Days but, but other community events for us to get behind because we can, we can not only see the benefit, but we can see the, the people coming that have never visited us before, that may take that extra trip here, and, and we're seeing those results, and we're proud of that, and, and I, I think as a community, we should be.
How far in advance do you set your dates? Do you have them for 2020 already?
Well, I can look at the calendar and tell you it's, it'll be the third week in July next year.
It's always the third weekend in July, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we've done that so that nearly all the other small towns around us already set their dates in, in that order, so whether it's Plainfield or whether it's Reedland, they all know what dates they're going to have, and we fit right in there on that, on that third week.
Okay.
And the other thing we wanted to do tonight, several months ago, actually about a half a year ago, I, I had a conversation with Paul Chevel, who is the, one of the leaders in Parks and Rec and TAB, Ray at that time, and we were discussing the, the oak tree out front, and we were presented with, with an opportunity that, to maybe take over the, the management of, of what to do with the tree and what was left over. It's been sitting out there for about two years, a little longer, and it's starting to decay, and, and it was to the point where we either needed to do something or it was going to be cut into firewood. And we went and looked at that, and, and I had indicated to them that Heritage Days would be willing to take that project on. I didn't ask them when I said we'd be willing, but as it, as it's turned out, it's been, been quite okay. But what we have done is we've taken the, the materials of the oak tree, and I had found a gentleman by the name of Bruce Smith out of Cedar Falls. He's a former resident here, and he has agreed to make various items for us for Heritage Days. And there's items like keychains and bookmarksers, and there's cutting boards. He's in the process of making clocks right now out of that wood. He also for us here recently made the mantles and shelving for the Studenhouse. And so those items that had decayed, and once the remodeling process takes place, they'll be able to use this actual tree, and those materials are already done and been delivered. One of the other things in talking with Tab originally that he thought he'd like to see was for City Hall to have something here and as a momentum of that tree, and what we had done in talking with Bruce, he actually put together this bench, which is, is made 100% of the burr oak tree. It's quite heavy. The burr oak tree is, is one of the hardest woods to deal with, and with that, you get that extra weight. But, but Heritage Days wanted to, to, to give this a gift to the city from us. I am pleased to be able to do that. The entire committee is pleased to do that. I, in the process right now of having a commemorative plaque made that will attach to the bench itself, but I wanted to, I wanted to have an opportunity to do that, and it will be a momentum to the city from Heritage Days.
Very good.
The other, the other thing that, as he was working along and I asked, asked Bruce to do for us, Mayor, I, I asked him to put together a new gavel for you. And, and he's actually, he's actually did this, and, and I would like to present this gavel to you.
Are you concerned that the mayor is wearing out the other one?
Very good. Thank you, Dar.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make, make use of it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that the, the slogan for this year, part of it came out, we were talking about the strategic planning session we had last summer about welcoming diversity, welcoming new people to town, and how to combine that with the strong roots we have heritage, basically Heritage Days here in Waverly, so that's where the slogan came from.
There was, yeah, we had a lot of discussion with that. It wasn't taken lightly, and, and in some manner, you always want to recognize the new, but, but it's the old that is our foundation. So one of the members come up with something close to that, and another one added something else, and before we knew it, then this is what we had.
That's very nice.
Very good. Any other?
Any other questions?
Questions or comments for Darwin and Jess?
I think we should offer a round of applause for that pitch.
I'll, I'll leave it up to Garrett what he wants to, wants to do or where he wants to place this. We'll find a great spot.
We'll find a great spot for it.
And these are extra two here for the offices. You can just kind of hear it.
Very good. Thanks again, Darwin and Jess, for the gift of the bench and the gavel and all of your input on the Heritage Days celebration. So we'll look forward to it.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing everybody.
Moving on, now Resolution 19-102, approving the bond disclosure policy for the city of Waverly. Entertain a motion.
I will move Resolution 19-102 as read by the mayor.
Motion made. Second. Council discussion. Do we need an explanation of any kind, James?
Sure. I've told you many times that we are always the victim of somebody doing something stupid on one of the coasts when it comes to selling bonds and some of the financial issues that come up. This is no different. As we sell our bonds, everybody wants to make sure that the information you're providing is 100% accurate. While our financial policies, touched on it briefly, our bond counsel, Everson Cooney, thought it would be a very good idea to have a specific policy directing disclosure issues as they come up. And that was just why this was developed and passed on to you to look at for approval. Moody's, S&amp;P, they want to see these because it's getting more and more serious. There's more training required. There's more items you have to contend with every time you issue debt now. And so this is part of the reason we have this policy here in place that you will hopefully approve. I'd suggest you approve it since they don't really want to see you not approve something like this. But that is where it came from, was bond counsel thought it would be a better idea. We had a few questions when we sold our bonds about one of the bidding companies. And these are the things that address it, these kind of policies.
Who wrote it?
Everson Cooney. This is not by my hand. I'd argue if I'm reading it, dissecting it and figuring out what Jennifer and I now get to do for the next, as long as we're here. And yeah, it's healthy. I mean, it just is. There's a lot in there you're going to have to take care of, so.
So it's not that we've done anything wrong. This is to make sure that we continue to do what is right as the whole process gets more complicated.
Yep. This puts into a document what we've already been doing and will continue to do. But the fact that it says it in a document now makes everyone a little more comfortable. We've been doing this ever since I've been here and since Jennifer's been here. It's just a different way of presenting it now that when they look at it, it is check a box and yes, we have that policy. And it helps increase your likelihood to get a better bond rating, so.
So James, in Exhibit B, there are multiple references to someone named Emma. Can you tell us who that is?
Emma is the municipal management system where all bonds and disclosure information is provided. It is a comprehensive system used nationwide. So whenever you put in your audit, which is a requirement by a certain number of days, or your disclosure before you do your bond work, your annual disclosure has to be set by a different date. All that is logged into Emma, abbreviation of the system. And you can access that and see what is and what is not available or readily available if it should be. And that's for every city and county and school and anyone that issues debt through Moody's or any other municipality like that.
Well, I have this thing about acronyms and I wasn't sure I was seeing the explanation. Maybe it's in there someplace, but you just ought to better ask.
It's on Section 104, Item D, second page.
You have that, okay. Thank you.
Any other council discussion questions on Resolution 19-102? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Wallstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Resolution 19-102 is approved. Resolution 19-91, approving the development agreement with Four Queens Real Estate LLC and accepting deed for parcel F.
FF, FF.
FF, I'm sorry. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-91, approving a development agreement with Four Queens Real Estate LLC and accepting deed for parcel FF containing 0.35 acres for the total amount of $7,100.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Council discussion. Bill, you're going to enlighten the sun on this.
You probably see things moving pretty quickly over there. They've already got the new sidewalk in and the new curbs. And in fact, today I saw an email that said, would you please get the paint on the curb and get the new striping? And it was done within an hour or two. So that's getting done. I think that'll be safer for that intersection. On the backside, the parking lot has now been poured or put in. We are going to change a little bit on this. We're not going to install steel bollards. We don't think that's a good look and we want to look at what we're going to do in the future. So we're actually going to take 24-inch limestone blocks and we're going to put those along the backside. We may not leave them in place when we do the rest of the development of the path because they could be used in different ways. They could be used to stack or create different things. And the black bollards didn't seem to fit into the design there. So I think that'll look nicer for now and will provide some protection from parking lot accidents going through that area, so.
Keep some cars out of the river.
Keep cars out of the river.
Thank you.
The rest of it's kind of contingent. Well, we're going to get the deed so we have the riverbank. It doesn't look like much now, but now we have to really wait until the bridge is redone because they'll use that area for development. It's actually a much better place to put sidewalks down to the river than what we're looking at farther south because of the fact that it's already kind of dug out somewhat and we can just create things in that area. So we think it will ultimately be a better way of continuing access to the river. There's a trail right down there now that the fishermen use quite regularly. So it'll be something like that so that we can do that when we get to that point. Otherwise, the rest of it seems to be falling in line very nicely. Mr. Nagel has done such a nice job of trying to restore some elements to that building, even what was used to be doors on the south end of each side. He had somebody create replicas of those doors. And so they're looking nice. He's getting all the painting done, trying to open this week sometime. He's not saying when because he wants to soft open, but I don't think it's going to happen very well. Once they see, there's already people, when I was standing there, that walked in and said, are you open? So I think it'll be a nice development on that particular property. And he's been very cooperative and very helpful with connecting for later development of that waterfront area.
And I see as part of the development agreement that we're finally making a definite decision on parking along that building on First Street because that's always been an issue. Should there be parking there or should there not be parking there?
I think with the way that the exit, you come out of that and you have two exits. And we just didn't want to see cars parked there to block safety.
And it would only be maybe two parking spots along the street anyway, not a lot of a great deal of parkings.
We didn't want them anywhere any closer to Bremer Avenue, so that from that driveway closer. We really couldn't have any. The other is just like two spots. And I think everybody would rather have the in and out traffic and have it safer. And the right turn lane is already marked. The straight lane is now the middle lane that goes straight and left. So it should work very well for the traffic flow.
That'll be a definite improvement on that with a marked right turn lane because there was a lot of unofficial usage and you never knew what somebody was going to do, so.
Now, eventually, there's going to be a plan, so I'm asking this, to extend the bike trail so it heads north along the east edge of that property. Is that correct?
Yes. We're going to hopefully work with the DOT when they rebuild the bridge to create a connection to the bridge on that end. And we'll have to do some way of bridging that last area there with either the abutment being out farther or something because it gets pretty narrow up by the bridge. But that's the easiest place to actually, you can hook on to the bridge perhaps and maybe create a little bit of area that's elevated and then connect it when it gets to the ground that's farther down. We intend to, the agreement says that we are going to work on some kind of a shelter out on that point. We hope it's going to be a nice looking gazebo that we could be proud to look at and look from. We can do that before the bridge is redone because I think we're far enough away that we can put it next to the trail as it curves right now towards First Street. So we think we can design that in the next year or two when we get future phases of the Riverside Park.
So where would that be?
Well, it'd be actually to the far south end of the property. The bank comes out quite a ways and there's some flat area. And we had projected to have like a gazebo along the trail at that point.
But that'll be on the FF parcel, correct?
Yes, that'll be on our parcel. That'll be our building. We're going to look for grant opportunities or fundraising opportunities with local service clubs. We're going to work with that in the next couple of years.
It'd be almost adjacent to the fire department property.
It's a little north of the fire department property, yeah.
I think the Dryleys used to have a utility shed out there in the Capital Area.
So it's pretty solid and pretty flat. And we'll just use that to build something that is kind of like a river view, like you're almost looking over the river from that location.
And the bike trail, that would be on our parcel FF. It wouldn't actually be on the Four Queens property.
Exactly. Their property really ends within a couple of feet of the end of their parking lot.
Based on the parking lot layout, do we have a number of vehicles that will be able to stack in the drive-through area?
You know, we were trying to look at that. You order kind of in the middle of the building on the east side. And so you could probably stack about five vehicles before you're at the window. And then you go around and you'll probably do another three before you get to the window where you pick up your orders. So it's a...
Just had a few people comment that it's not unusual when they go to the one in Cedar Falls to see vehicles 15 to 20 deep. And they're wondering how that was going to work with the fire department entrance.
We'll have to see how that works because if that's successful, maybe the first month, first couple of weeks, it'll be that way. And maybe it'll settle down to a more manageable. We'll see how that traffic goes and we'll see what we have to do, which is kind of why we didn't want parking out there because we didn't want people stopping and jumping out and going in and just kind of clogging things up there.
People could walk.
And the trail does connect there at this point. So it's not that you can't take the trail to get there. You just can't go up to the bridge. You have to go around the rest of the road.
Well, I'm waiting to have a nice bike ride between the Four Queens and the sweet spot in Denver. I think that'd be a nice bookend between a good bike ride.
I would encourage you to look at the leisure services, construction of the different shelters because we tried to make unified or kind of common themes with the shelters. So to kind of keep in that same mindset.
We would like to do that, especially since the depot is restored basically to a really good look of the past. So the same architect is working on both.
Other questions, comments on the development agreement with Four Queens? Roll call vote, please.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Wallstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Resolution 19-103, approving fiscal year 2019 transfers. Entertain a motion.
We approve Resolution 19-103 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Council discussion.
This is just normal year-end true-up.
Jenny's all, Jen's all prepared to answer those questions.
It is. And you approve fiscal year-end transfers every year. This year, you need to approve it by resolution. The city finance committee proposed a rule change. So now you have a rule change that you must approve by resolution. The ones that you have here are only the ones that we know for sure are going to be done. I think we're good. If we need more, we'll do it the 1st of July. And with this new change, you will also have to approve the resolution by resolution, the transfers by resolution when you do the budget, when you approve the budget. So right now, you just approved the budget and the transfers are there. Now you'll have to approve those transfers by resolution also.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Wallstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Resolution 19-103, approving fiscal year transfers is approved. Resolution 19-105, appointing UMB Bank N.A. of Kansas City, Missouri to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 19-105 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Council discussion. I'm assuming this is the bank that bid on the $3.5 million in bonds we just sold?
This is the bank that will process our payments and our escrow. They'll do all the bookkeeping, the bookwork, transfers. They kind of take care of everything after the fact.
Council discussion, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Roffey?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Wallstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Resolution 19-105, approving the transfer in agreement with UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri is approved. Resolution 19-106, amending the resolution, authorizing the issuance of $3,500,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2019, and levying a tax for the payment thereof, passed and approved on March 4, 2019, by substituting a new resolution therefore, authorizing and approving the issuance of the bonds and levying a tax for the payment thereof and approving a tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-106 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Council discussion. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Cher?
Yes.
Wallstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Roffey?
Yes.
Resolution 19-106, amending the resolution, authorizing the issuance of bonds is approved. Next item is Resolution 19-107, approving the contract with AHTS Architects for Design Services for the Bremer Avenue Streetscape. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 19-107, approving contract with AHTS Architects for Design Services for the Bremer Avenue Streetscape.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Council discussion.
I guess I just got one question. I look back on my agendas. In the study session on October 22nd, we discussed some of the features that we wanted to see in the streetscape. Has anything happened? And now we're approving a contract for actually design services for that. Why has it taken so long to get from October to what we did in October to actually having a contract to do the design services?
We had to wait till it was in the budget and approve it so that we have the budget year coming up.
That makes sense.
And really, when you see the elements there in the contract, the simple contract there, it's a placeholder because now when he does final plans, this will be something that will be brought back for approval to move forward with bidding. Or on some items we'd be bidding, some items would just be purchasing those items. We just wanted to give you an idea as to how we came up with the budget number and why the budget number was what it was. It may be a suggestion that fewer things are done or different things in different quantities. Generally speaking, we wanted to show you what had been worked on for three years, basically. And some of that work, you know, is preliminary to this, So we'll come back with a finished version of what we want the council to approve, once we have that, that design will be part of that fifteen thousand six hundred, then that will be done and brought to council. And then he'll oversee the installation and monitoring of the items when they're installed.
Who's on that committee? Who's working on where things will go, and what you actually want to choose?
That's been fairly fluid, we've had different groups, different downtown owners. We've invited lots of them, and we've had several meetings where a number of them have presented, been there and present, and listened to, and given feedback. And in fact, you'll look at some of the ideas that were put out as needed in the streetscape have already been completed through the Bremer Avenue project. So we're filling in the blanks of the things that didn't get done by the contractors on that project. And we decided that we didn't wanna add a complication to the Bremer Avenue project to do trees and those kinds of things. So those things will go on the brick strip, which is pretty easy to remove and then put back in when we do that. And we really have to inventory what we have currently for benches, planters, those kinds of things. We need to make sure we do things consistent. We won't necessarily buy everything the same, but we want it to be a consistent look. So there'll be a presentation and a proposal for what we can buy, what the prices will be, where we plan to put them, and we wanna get feedback from merchants who may be directly affected by that, if it's outside of their building, outside of their corner. We want their input, and we will be asking for those business owners to show up at a meeting, or come in and we'll talk about the ideas that we have so far, because we think their feedback is really important to get a buy-in from what we intend to do.
Is there anyone beside the merchants who's on this committee?
Well, we, it's, we've had members of the Chamber of Commerce involved in it, we've had staff members, our own staff members who manage the flowers and the plants, and who'll be doing the work, they're on that committee also. So we haven't really refined the definition of the group, it's really having the consultant then come back, and then get feedback from the business owners and people that are gonna be affected by it, before we bring it to council, to kinda show you what we've itemized and what we're proceeding with.
If people had opinions and they wanted to get involved, how would they do that?
Certainly can, at the Economic Development Office, we can take comments, certainly would listen to anybody who has some suggestions. We will probably do meetings that aren't intended to be exclusionary, but we're probably gonna send out invitations to people like the Chamber and some others, and other business owners, and by word of mouth, try to get people involved in the feedback sessions. They're not decision-makers, they're just giving feedback for the architect to basically put together a plan, then bring to this group to approve finally.
Well, for me, this is a really high priority, and I hope that it will be pushed forward with all due speed. That is, as we're able to do things in the budget, that we make sure that our downtown merchants are being taken care of, because they've gotten hit really hard with a lot of things, and, you know, they may again in the future, so this is something that I think is very important, and, you know, we need to make sure that it doesn't stall and gets pushed forward.
I don't see that happening, I've already met with Larry several times, he's been in my office several times, and he's been thinking about this and wanting to jump in and get in there right away. We were kinda waiting for that budget year to start, so we could approve the funding through that budget year, so we've had to wait till July 1st, now we're ready to move forward and hit the ground running.
Yeah, I thought the final drawings, you know, of what might be developed down there looked great. I'm glad to hear you say that the parks staff are gonna be involved, because they're gonna be the ones taking care of all the stuff.
That's right.
And there's nothing worse than every other tree being dead on your downtown street, so...
We're trying not to have that happen, we're spending a little more money on installation, so that those trees will be more likely to succeed and grow. And they're not gonna be the wide, big, giant trees, they're the columnars that add color, and they're gonna be varieties, so I think they'll add some really, some good color to the downtown. And we, you know, we're proceeding with the banners that will be put up on the street, on the streetlights, those, that'll be done as part of this project also. We're working with the Chamber to help finance some of that effort, so that's the next, that's a part of this streetscape, that's gonna be part of the overall plan for completing it.
And I think it's a very wise step that you're considering taking of visiting with business owners, to show them what might be going in in front of their establishment, because there are some that have some very particular views of what they want to see and what they don't want to see, and I would hate to try to force a tree, or a plant, or something in front of somebody's business that doesn't wanna have that there. So I think that's a very important step to take.
Yes.
I was kinda hoping Larry was going to be here this evening, because as I went through it, particularly on the drawing that says all corners are different, James and I talked a little bit about it this morning. To me, that arrangement is an overkill, plus it encroaches on the pedestrian crossing. I'm trying to figure out the need for a double bench, along with a seat planter.
See, this is, this is actually Larry's way back, two or three years ago, concepts that haven't, I mean, haven't been refined, and we know there's some of those concerns that we have. So I think we really just have to get you an actual product that he's come up with, and actually show each corner individually, how the, because we have fire agents, we have different things that we have to worry about, we have those same concerns that you do with the limited space on the bumpouts, we want pedestrian access, but the other thing we want is pedestrian protection, they found on these bumpouts that having something close by for them to have refuge behind, may be sometimes very important for pedestrians, so we don't wanna impede the ADA sidewalk access areas, but we also wanna place things that might be very important for comfort and protection.
And also in his drawings, I wish he would get rid of the reference to a bike lane that's on that drawing. We've done everything we can to discourage that concept, also...
The final ones will do that.
But these are out there, I had the same reaction, these are out there, and they confuse, and they also allow people to use them, use it inappropriately.
I didn't want him to have to redo things to spend the time and money on that, so...
Yeah, way down. Yeah.
The next ones will not say that.
Put your thumb over it.
How committed are we, is he to the trees that he, the two types of trees that he's showing? My concern is neither one of those allow for pedestrians to get close to them, under them. Part of them, depending on the placement, a fifteen-foot wide tree will encroach into the, into the parking by about three or three and a half feet.
I think when you look at those, that's probably a thirty or forty-year maturity, and most of these trees that they're gonna put in, unless you create a, unless you put in a tree that's designed to be a dwarf, or not to grow as much, you have to replace trees as they get too big.
But it's also a matter of trimming, I mean, you know, I've seen in some cities, especially European ones, but also American cities, where you can have very large trees, but they're heavily, heavily ruined. I mean, you know, you really have to keep them up.
We intend to have guards on these, because the guards are the protection of the tree, and also provide bike racks, so we don't have to have separate bike racks. And that means that they're gonna wanna have no branches up, I mean, they're gonna wanna have that up a ways, so that, you know, the actual leaves will be higher up than being off the ground.
And you're aware that a yink of tree, by hereditary or whatever, typically drops its leaves all at once?
Well, I'll tell you what, I don't know much about trees, and we have a couple of people on staff that know a lot about trees, and these are examples, and final decisions will be presented when we present the proposal for approval.
Just what little I know about trees, I, early on in my career as a homeowner, that's what I was told.
Then you only have to sweep once.
Yeah. Well, just park Mike's Public Works vacuum truck down by each tree.
You know, one thing about these architects, these landscape architects, they've learned what other cities have used for trees that work the best, and there may be, and so those types that we want to have, not have to replace a lot, we wanna make sure they work, so we'll trust them to present some different, and we want some different color, we don't want the same color everywhere, the same kind of tree, so...
Well, it sounds like a good idea to have tree guards. Does spending more than a thousand dollar for a tree guard seem a little high, or is that the going rate?
They're very nice, Mike.
Yeah, there's so many different varieties we've been looking at. I didn't think they were a thousand dollars a piece, though.
Garbage cans are twelve hundred.
Yeah, they're more than a thousand.
Is that for the numbers of them?
And a hundred dollars a piece, just to put them in place.
Well, let's hope we can get that down, and may have more of them.
Those might be federal government prices, we're gonna try and get a little less on that.
It just seems that...
Use our five hundred dollar hammer to put them together, so...
I mean, they're decorative, they're out of steel, you know, they're iron, I mean, not steel, iron.
Cast iron.
I don't know if they're cast, they're just, they're black, we're gonna be using a black theme for the trim.
Well, maybe you could get a quantity discount, if you're gonna do twenty or forty or whatever.
Anyway, any...
Well, the other thing I do wanna say is I want to encourage a diversity of opinions when we're talking about who's looking at the plans, and who's contributing to the brainstorming side of things. I just, wanna make sure that it's not kind of the same old people making the same old decisions, I'd really like to make sure that we're getting a diversity of opinions, and a lot of eyes and new ideas looking at these, so I think it is important to make sure the merchants are looking at everything, but I also think it's good to get a lot of different kind of input, and a lot of different opinions, looking at these and sharing ideas.
Well, we'll have a public forum and present those, and get some feedback. I think that's the best way to do it, invite them, and basically have it...
For sure, I think people just have to understand, I mean, this is kinda the thing that, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and so in the end, somebody's gonna have to make a decision, and somebody's not gonna be happy, you know, so...
We tend to look at other cities where we really look good, they really look good, and we say, why would it look like that? And just pick some of those kinds of elements, because it's tried and true, you know, we're not picking out stuff that nobody's used before, so we should have some idea. And we'll look at cost, 'cause if you can do cheaper ones of this, and more of it, or you can do that kinda thing, we'll do the best we can to actually just outline, and exactly where they're gonna be, that's what we really wanna see, is how they're gonna be distributed, how they're gonna be presented on both sides of the river, and we'll have feedback from everybody when that happens.
I was gonna kinda save this for my comments at the end of the meeting, but I think it fits well here. As part of the Main Street program in Iowa, they've changed a little bit, instead of Main Street coming in and kind of doing a survey of the community, those type of things, they're doing an exchange program where Waverly's Main Street gets five or six volunteers to go be secret shoppers in another Main Street district, and I had an opportunity to do that a few weeks ago, and again, it was a secret, so I won't tell you where I went, but it was comforting, I guess, to see their Main Street, and they had incorporated a lot of the things that we were looking at doing, and it was just a very comfortable stroll up and down Main Street, very inviting. The one thing that I saw that maybe isn't in this, at about every street corner, kinda where their bumpouts were, they had a two-sided, very attractive display of old photographs of the community, and gave a brief history of them, so they tied history into it, again, just incorporating the way signage, those type of things. I know there's a segment in the community that thinks Bremer Avenue is Highway Three, and we just wanna get through it as quick as we can, but there is a need to make it more inviting, slow it down a little bit, so folks can appreciate the businesses that are there, and I see this just being the next logical step in that, and it will change your feel of the downtown.
I took a lot of pictures of my visit, too, so there's lots of things we can go from, I think, and there's others that have done things like that, that we would like to see, and maybe we can't do them all now, but we can identify what we might wanna do in the future, too, so...
Yeah, that was the one thing I was gonna say, was signage, you know, like where is the civic center, where is the post office, where are the landmarks?
We all know that we need something of that nature.
Yeah, but there's a slide in there about branding with those historic photos of certain shops and maps, and I think that was nice.
We talked about public parking notifications behind the streets, that's a big one, too, coming in, where you identify.
Farmers market, though, whatever, yeah.
As a part of the Bremer Avenue project, we created some parking signs, public parking signs, we wanna make sure that those are available, so people know their public parking signs, and we've put those up on most of the parking lots downtown, just to identify those for the people that visit.
And again, my visit was very reassuring to some of the things we're doing, and the piece outside of the downtown district was just the conversation that continued to be had about our interest into the community, Fourth Street South, East and West Bremer. This community, you could tell, was spending some effort to spruce up their entrances to their business district into their town. It was certainly something that drew my attention, that was lacking, but it was good to see that they are doing that, and again, I think we're just ahead of the curve in the fact that through planning and zoning and leader services, there's always discussions around those type of things. It's great to see the businesses, things expanding, but it needs to be done in a controlled manner as much as you can, without dictating this and that, but certainly your perception of the community is affected by that, what you first see moment.
We have great vision for the trails, I know, we've had conversations in our office, Garrett and I and others, about the trails when we get them finished, like the Cedar River Parkway Trail, that connection to the rail trail, the South Riverside Park, how you can access everything, we'd like to get maps, that kinda thing, that show you where to go, how to get to places, distances from them, how far you're gonna go to get to a particular place, we think that's a real plus for our community, because we have a lot of trails to use, and people don't always know that, because they get a little confused by where they're going and how they get there, so hopefully we can help with that in the future.
I also have to share that a constituent shared with me that we are missing one of our great claims to fame, that Waverly is the birthplace of Hawkeye the Avenger, and perhaps we need a Hawkeye the Avenger statue in downtown to commemorate that we're his birthplace. I just wanted to get that on the record, so I have to share that.
You thought public input, trees is gonna be difficult, until the art discussion happens, and you have to start making public art, and...
We have a lot of information about our historic buildings, especially the downtown buildings, and from the historic preservation work that's been done already, I think we have a lot of material to work with.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Blashtine?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Tangis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Resolution nineteen dash one oh seven, approving the contract with AHTS Architects for Bremer Avenue Streetscape is approved. Resolution nineteen dash one oh eight, accepting a sanitary sewer main easement from Robert Denny, and authorizing payment to Denny pursuant to the development agreement. Entertained a motion?
I will move approval of resolution nineteen one oh eight, accepting a sanitary sewer main easement from Robert Denny, and authorizing a payment of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to Robert Denny pursuant to the development agreement.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
This was the main that we've basically put through the center of the parking lot to give access.
From Fourth Street into the driving range property, there's a, there'll be an access point for that development to use from there. Basically, we wanted to make sure that it was gonna be accessible and easy to get to, they were gonna have to do new services for the development of the subway there, and the other development on that property. Rather than just do a service line, we upgraded it to a sewer main connection that can be hooked in and go farther out into the east and north. It'll be very valuable for that purpose, otherwise it was gonna cost a lot more to go in different locations than that. I have it in hand, by the way, it was hand-delivered today by Mr. Denny, the sewer easement is in my hand, so he's excited about getting completed at his new subway store.
Maybe a little off-topic, but on the diagram that went with this proposal, in addition to... addition to subway, there looks like there's plans for another restaurant in there. Is that true?
What they put in the original diagram was a future restaurant. What he said to me today was, we can increase the size of the types of units he already has there. And they were in compartments, so they can do 1, 2, 3, 4, they can do 2/2s, they can do different things. Whether he does a restaurant there, I don't know for sure because the parking requirements are such that we're gonna have to discuss how much that can be done because of the parking requirements. So it may be just the same kind of bays that he has now for the other uses. He's excited, he's almost full, he's got one lot left, so.
I know at times, there's always questions about what does the Economic Development Area Commission Department do? And I guess I see this as one of those silent things that they do. They could have just allowed the development to go through, knowing that if and when something to the east took place, we would have to deal with it. But it was just an opportunity to be proactive and looking at economic development in an area that has potential for growth and doing it at a much lower cost than it would have been, so.
It's always great to work with people like Bob Denny and Quick Star, who have been really good partners with each other about helping each other's businesses, connecting with different access entries, listening to us about concerns that we had, maybe changing some configurations to make the traffic flow better. So they're looking forward to seeing the traffic study next spring because I think they're concerned about how it's timed out there, and I think that'll help us with how to optimally time that intersection also.
True.
Any other questions, comments? Rokevold, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Trinkow?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Scherer?
Yes.
Walstein?
Yes.
Resolution 19-108, accepting a sanitary sewer main easement from Robert Denny is approved. Resolution 19-109, approving an application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for state recreational trails funding and directing execution of said application by the Waverly City Council. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-109, approving an application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for state recreational trails funding and directing execution of said application by the Waverly City Council with a 25%, $74,000 local match.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on resolution 19-109. Council discussion. Questions?
So explain the paved extension along from Highway 3 to Shell Rock. Is that going to be part of this?
No.
This is just apart from 16th.
To Highway 3.
Street to Highway 3, along Tenth Avenue.
And that's more of the sidewalk, 10-foot wide trail extension?
And is this a budget item, or where are these funds coming from?
We pushed this application off the fiscal 21, which is when we could get the funding to go ahead with this if we are awarded the grant. So we will have funding available, fiscal 2021. So we have it planned into our five-year plan to have that sharing portion funded at that time.
This is an application, a replacement application for funding that we approved earlier, if I remember.
That's correct. We have funding already programmed through Intercog, but this is state funding, which, if awarded, is, at the full amount, would be a little bit more. I think it's another $20,000, $25,000 in dollars that would be available. So the local match would be less. Additionally, it would keep the Intercog funds local and available for another six-county project. So that's one of the benefits. We think that this has a very good chance of receiving state recreational trails funding because the Rolling Prairie Trail system, this is like the last half-mile stretch in a 40-plus mile corridor from Reedland all the way to Bristow.
Anytime we can utilize the state's funding versus local funding, we'll definitely take that. As Mike alluded to, it would have been $110,000 match on the other plan with Intercog. This will only be a 74.
Again, the link from Waverly to Shell Rock is by way of the wider shoulders that they're putting on Highway 3.
That's correct. The DOT is paving a wide shoulder, and they will sign it to accommodate bike paths on the shoulder, on both sides of the shoulder. So you will bike with the direction of traffic on the shoulder. The nice thing is, is that there is a rumble strip separating the travel lane from the bicycling lane. So in the event a vehicle was starting to drift over, you're gonna hear it. And they will sign it accordingly from Waverly to Shell Rock.
So Mike, you're saying that it's gonna be on both sides of the highway? Is that correct?
The paved shoulders are on both sides, and so you go with the direction of traffic.
Okay, I got it.
This trail is on the north side of the road. This half-mile strip we're talking about.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So the paved shoulder along Highway 3, about how wide is that? For comparison, I know there's a strip along Highway 3 just west of Reedland where you've got the same sort of a shoulder to ride on with rumble strips in between. Is it about that same width, or is it wider, or?
I believe this is a six-foot wide paved shoulder, and after you count for the rumble strip, you will have, I believe, four feet. This is not meant for eight-year-olds. This is meant for experienced riders.
That would be better.
Yeah, I think it's a little wider than what you've got on Highway 3, but I think you've got about maybe two, maybe three feet, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Rokevold, please.
Trinkow?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Scherer?
Yes.
Walstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Resolution 19-109, approving the application for state trails funding for rec trail is approved. Resolution 19-110, approving amendment number three, engineering services with McClure Engineering Company for 20th Street Northwest Improvements 2020. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-110, approving amendment number three for engineering services with McClure Engineering Company of Clive, Iowa for 20th Street Northwest Improvements 2020 for a not-to-exceed amount of $64,000 to develop the plans, specifications, and bid package as explained in the agreement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion, questions? Very none. Rokevold, please.
Cangis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Scherer?
Yes.
Walstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Trinkow?
Yes.
Resolution 19-110, approving amendment for engineering services with McClure Engineering for 20th Street Northwest Improvements is approved. Resolution 19-117, approving change order number one for the Exchange Building renovation portion of the South Riverside Park Improvement Project Phase 1. Entertained a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-111, approving change order number one for the Exchange Building renovation portion of the South Riverside Park Improvement Project Phase 1 for mat construction of Sumner, Iowa for the amount of either $8,034.50 or $8,104.50, depending on which option we like. Can I make a motion like that?
Or just pick one.
Or just pick one. That's a good suggestion.
Putting a lot of pressure on Mike there.
Well, I'll just pick the first option. I'll make the resolution to include option one for $8,034.50.
I think the, as I read through the pack at the time, I don't know if it's the contractor or the architect recommends option number two.
That's correct.
Wouldn't that be about it? I'd be happy to, I would be happy to...
You can amend your motion.
I'm gonna second you, yeah, so.
I'll be glad to revise it. Somebody remind me, what is the difference between these two options?
It's to do with where they...
One involves filling the hole and drilling drainage holes, and the other involves leaving the hole empty, but not filling the hole.
Correct.
So which one is filling the hole?
Garrett, would you run through the options? The reason why we're at this point, what was discovered, and kind of a synopsis for the people viewing as to what exactly are we doing with this?
Yep. What was discovered upon excavating outside of the Exchange Building was a pit that kind of had a trapdoor inside the Exchange Building. They believed it was used for maintenance for the scale. What we are looking at is, it was filled with kind of mud, sand, water, that kind of stuff. So the two options are, we'll go over option one first. Option one is to, we're gonna dig all that muck out, drill holes in the bottom so that, you know, any rainwater or anything like that theoretically would drain out. And then we would fill that with limestone, and then we put the deck on top of that. We'd have, it'd be down about two feet. That's what we would use for the structure of the deck. With that, there's a possibility that there could be heaving from the freezing during the winter, that kind of stuff. There could be backup from groundwater that would come in, you know, through those, through the holes that we drill in. That was kind of the concern of the architect. So with option number two, we still need to dig everything out. It's already been dug out far enough that we can see that there are existing piers and footings, you know, in the pit. So we can use those footings and piers to put the structure of the deck on that, and it's not going to, you know, it's not gonna hurt the integrity of the structure or anything like that. It'll still hold everything that it's meant to hold. Some of the benefits of that would be, you know, there won't be that heaving. You know, I guess I forgot to mention that there is gonna be a sidewalk connection there where the sidewalk will hook up to the sides of the deck. So that was kind of a concern with the heaving. Also with this option number two, if there ever needs to be maintenance performed or something like that, you know, on the underside of the deck, chances are that's not going to happen. But if it did, we would be able to access it that much easier.
And so the deck, is the deck made out of wood?
Correct.
Did I read that? And it's gonna be flush with the sidewalk there in that area?
It will be raised just a little bit. It's even with the Exchange Building structure, the foundation.
Can we get a solid motion and second? And we'll have council discussion.
Well, I would, I don't know what parliamentary procedure requires, but if I am permitted to do it, I will amend my own motion to include option number two for $8,104.50.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to deal with option number two. So we're open to council discussion and questions.
I think option number two is clearly the better option, but I'm always amazed at what you find when you start digging around these old buildings. And I looked at the pictures, and it is incredible what they built for this scale on the building. I think to fill it up with rock would be just a shame, plus the fact that there's actually a door underneath, you can open it up and go in and get access to it. So I know that that's never gonna be open to the public in all likelihood, but still, just to know that that is under the building and how the building operated is more in line of what we wanted to do with an historical structure than filling it up and pretending it didn't exist, particularly since the architect recommended option two as being the better, you know, the better method to go ahead and taking care of the problem. So to me, option two is clearly the way to go.
Probably get some council tours if you wanna get...
I want a council tour.
Halloween tour, I think.
I'm still, I'm still saddled with a crypt, so.
So does that drain into city sewers somewhere? Could it fill up with water?
It could. The plan would be, if there's any problem with water down the road, to install a sump.
Is there issues of that wooden deck, like freezing because it's got like the space underneath it? Is that gonna cause it to more likely develop ice or anything? Am I asking the wrong person?
You're asking the wrong person on that, but that is a good point.
That would have less chance because you've got air circulating underneath it rather than...
The architect describes it as a bridge deck. So it'd be like a wooden bridge deck that has, you know, there underneath, but it'd be more genuine for what it was before.
Right.
I'm just thinking about when I drive down the highways and it says "bridge ices for the rest of the road." That's what I'm thinking about.
I have some concerns about either, both options. One, option one, which is not on the table, but does not mention anything about filling that hole in the side of the building, which you would have to do if you're gonna fill the pit. And option two, I mean, I understand from visiting with James that the wooden deck would be made out of bridge plank or something very similar. So water's gonna go through the cracks, water and snow and gravel and whatever you have.
Correct.
And if you're gonna put a sump pump down there, that's gonna need, like, somebody's gonna need to watch that to maintain operation. Bridge deck is gonna need some maintenance periodically. I would rather see, and I don't know what the cost difference would be, I would rather see a concrete slab poured with stained concrete and brushed to resemble planking. That would seal that whole pit. No maintenance, no nothing. You wouldn't have to fill anything. You could leave the hole on the side of the building. You don't have a sump pump to deal with. I think in the long run, it would be a better serviced, or a more serviceable addition to that building than a wooden deck.
I mean, we can check with the architect on something like that. I think the whole idea of the wooden deck, you know, was to represent the old scale that was there. And I think that, I mean, that's obviously the main reason for that.
I understand that, but I'm looking down the road, even five years of the maintenance that's gonna have to be done with a wooden deck. So that's my two cents worth, that I think there's an option that maybe had not been explored.
To me, with either one, I would be concerned about what kind of animals, snakes, pests, rodents, could go under there.
Well, if it's not filled, then they go under there. You know, they're gonna end up in the pit, which obviously we would have access to from inside the building to remove them if that was the case.
Who's taking the snakes out?
We can investigate that option if the council prefers to do that and look at the issues that are brought up as far as maintenance, what that requirement might look like.
I mean, if I understand, option one was to penetrate the bottom of the pit so that it would self-drain in some respect.
Correct.
Could we do that even if we didn't fill it?
We could, but the concern is then of the groundwater still coming up.
Possible pressure in the river backfilling that up even worse, not knowing when you drill through what's really gonna be the pressure underneath it.
You also don't know the subsoil underneath that, if that's even permeable for good drainage.
The Historic Preservation Commission actually has had... The Historic Preservation Commission actually has had a lot of interest in this building, has been very instrumental in pushing to have it restored as much as possible. I believe that even, we have a contractor that's created the door and repainted the door to look authentically like it did before. The thought was that this wooden decking, which is going to be like a bridge that could be used today when they restore some of these decks, it should be sealed up fairly well. It's not going to let, it's not going to let critters and things in, I don't think. There could be some moisture that gets in. The description of it though is the idea that with this deck, you could drive, you could drive an antique fire truck across it, you could drive a vehicle onto it. It's supposed to be strong enough with the piers and the things that they're going to create for it to really be more authentically the same building that was there when it was used. So I think it's an attention to detail that really was quite intentional by the architect.
Yeah, I think the whole point in restoring it was to keep it as historically accurate as we could, you know, within reason, cost-wise and practically speaking. These are good questions though of how long will that deck last? What kind of extra maintenance is it going to need? But I think it's important to do that to keep it historically accurate if we can. Can we get any more answers about the maintenance? I mean, is there an urgency about this or could we table it till the next meeting or something like that?
Well, the urgency is they were hoping to be done at the beginning of June and we put it off till now, you know.
But what is the consequence if they do put it off? Is there a problem if we would delay it?
Contractor has a contract to complete it. We're delaying it for him if he has other work to be done.
Correct. Did the architect or anybody mention anything about maintenance in this whole process?
Well, I think the type of decking they're using is what people put on in pedestrian bridges, smaller bridges in that situation where they actually use them for the historic aspect of it. I don't think there was any concern about it lasting, you know, just a couple of years or something before it deteriorates. They treat them, they have that decking that's.
This would have been in the original plans anyways to have a decking.
Yes. Yeah, the decking hasn't changed. It's just what we put underneath it. Don't put underneath it.
What if we delay it one week? Why don't we do that? Why don't we let him know we'll delay it one week? We have a couple of items we have to take care of in the study session, which we don't want to do usually, but they are urgent in the sense of the dates we have to be required to, related to the airport. It's got a June 20 deadline. Since we have regular session work done, we could add it back on for next week, try and get that information for you to at least have a better sense of what we're looking at, total scheme for maintenance, possible concrete deck. We can dig into that a little more if council approves something like that.
I would move to table resolution 19-111 until next Monday.
June 24th.
Second.
I think that has to be a postponement.
Postpone.
I believe so. Postpone until a date. Correct.
Second.
Question made in second to postpone action on resolution 19-111. Any other discussion?
Do we have a list of the questions that we want answered?
Yep.
Call, call vote please.
Mackenzie.
This is on the postponement.
On postpone.
Need to be a voice voter to a motion.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. I think that's a voice vote, isn't it, Valerie?
Yep, if it's a motion or a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing resolution 19-111, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Resolution 1911 is postponed until June 24th, study session.
Real quick question, Bill. When did this building stop being an exchange building, do you know?
About 1965.
Sixty-five?
Something like that.
What did they weigh there?
Grain trucks. There was an elevator there. Railroad tracks ran from someplace out in the country, Waverly Junction, up through Coleman Park and across the river and.
No, I think it backed out actually. I think it stopped there and then it backed out with the trains.
Well, one time the trains went across the river by Waverly Utilities because there are pictures of that.
I think that, yeah, it wasn't, I don't believe it was this one.
It may not have been.
Yep.
Okay.
The rail trail bridge would have gone.
That was a different line.
No, it was painted orange.
As I recall, the architect's drawings of Phase Three of South River Side Park did really emphasize the railroad aspect of that area and some of the paths, the parking areas, some things like that. The fact that the building there that will be putting the cover on here this summer, that's at an angle and was because that's where the railroad was, so they had it in an angle to fit it into that area. So there's a lot of history there with the railroads.
It was called the Farmers Exchange Building for that reason. I mean, that's what they came and exchanged your grain for money.
We're going to get a plaque for this, right?
There's a lot of elements that they're planning on doing. It's really beautiful. It's going to be nice.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of mayoral appointments. They asked that you approve Paul Stevenson to be reappointed on the Economic Development Commission for a term ending July 2022. Troy Miller reappointed on the Economic Development Commission for a term ending July 2022. And Mark Hannawell reappointed to the Economic Development Commission for a term ending July 2022. Do you entertain a motion?
I would move approval of mayoral appointments.
Second.
Question made in second. Any discussion?
Again, it's good to see these three names back on the list. I know they're all very busy people, but they've been a great asset to economic development and their input and insight in Waverly itself as well as outside of Waverly.
The nice thing was they didn't have to twist arms or anything. They were all eager to say yes. Very good. All those in favor of mayoral appointments, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? They are approved for reappointment. Reports from boards and commissions, monthly financials, May of 2019, received in the record, Bremer-Waverly Law Force Board minutes, June 10, 2019. Hopefully they're replacing more than one HVAC unit at the law center for.
We're replacing them on a schedule, so we're doing several a year and hopefully we'll be able to maintain that schedule so that we're not impacting budgets too much. But you know, since that topic did come up, you know, the building is getting older and we are going to have more maintenance types of things associated with the building and we'll have to make a decision on whether we want to fund those on an ongoing basis and, you know, develop some cash reserves for the law center so that we can take care of those issues, you know, maintenance issues on an older building or, you know, we go the other route and we have to borrow the money to make those things happen. So that's probably a discussion we're going to have to have next year at the budget sessions.
Received in the record, Waverly Senior Center calendar. Received in the record, Waverly Public Library Board of Trustees minutes. Received in the record. Staff comments?
I don't believe I have any to answer.
Okay, very good. Council comments?
I wanted to just say something about, because I think there's some common misunderstandings came up earlier in the public comment time again, and I know I've had constituents say similar things to me, that I think the chronology that Mr. Hundley outlined isn't correct. I mean, I think we're having some light adjustments, stoplight adjustments that are happening before the traffic study there that are directly a part of doing some of the final pieces of the work for the, for Bremer Avenue.
They were completed last week.
Last week, okay. And I guess with regard to the traffic study in general, I think there are a lot of people who think that the traffic study will consist only of evaluating the effectiveness of the Bremer Avenue changes. And it's my understanding, and I'm pretty sure I'm right about this because I think we approved it separately and long before, that doing traffic studies periodically is just a best practice for figuring out different things that we need to know about roadways, collector's streets, main avenue, you know, whatever all the different categories are and what kind of traffic flow we have and how we can improve upon that. So I think it's important for people to know that that's a best practice that we would likely be doing anyway, separate from any, hopefully it will include some information about the changes on Bremer Avenue that we can evaluate as well. But I think that's a common misunderstanding out there right now, so I just wanted to say something about that.
That's absolutely correct. It'll be more than Bremer Avenue. There's a number of intersections. I don't know if you want to give a 30-second overview, Mike, of what this is going to encompass, but it's a lot more than just Bremer Avenue.
Fourth Street, Southwest Corridor, obviously we're going to look at every signalized intersection, but in addition to that, we probably have another dozen intersections that we're going to be focusing in on as well. So we wanted to target a time to do this study when school was in session, when college was in session, but we did not have any adverse effects from construction projects. So we want to get the Cedar River Parkway open, we want to get school in session, but we want to do the traffic counting next April before the impact of the Fourth Street Southwest reconstruction project and anything else going in town. So we have probably in the neighborhood of two dozen intersections, of which I think 14 are signalized.
Want to say, Mike, we had, the last time we did a study was '08 or '09, something like.
And that focused only on Bremer Avenue. Otherwise, it's been, we've done some other targeted work. There were some traffic impact studies done with Walmart. They funded that one. Casey's funded the one at the 10th Avenue intersection just this past year. We also had the middle school that did a traffic impact study as far as access onto Heritage Way, Highway 3. So as well as that 16th Street Northwest on Bremer Avenue, that was a result of the middle school as well. So we've done targeted ones, but as far as comprehensive ones, really it's been, as you indicated, Tim, around 2009, we did Bremer Avenue corridor study.
It is a best practice to have for the community to have a knowledge of the whole community, not, we're not talking about just a one.
Well, my understanding has been that it would encompass existing 10th Avenue from Fourth Street to Highway 3 because there's some concerns about speed limits there, amount of traffic, driveway access, et cetera. Now also, even the Parkway, when it enters Highway 3 east of town, just a general citywide study for virtually everything.
Right, so the 10th Avenue corridor, if you want to look at that, would be with the intersection of Highway 3 west, 16th Street going up to the high school, middle school, Fourth Street, possibly 8th Street, but, and then Highway 3 east intersection. So we started to see, you know, it's a major urban arterial roadway. We want to address, again, traffic will be normalized probably by next April, traffic patterns around the community, and that's the ideal time to do your counting.
So my quick question for you. I continue to get questions from a few folks about our timetable for opening the Parkway. Are we on schedule with that? What do we think the open date will be now?
I use the month of August.
Pretty specific.
Well, I have zero control over the weather and when it rains every third day, you know, we still have grading and paving to do for the trail system, but you can't pave on mud and just when things are starting to dry out, it rains again. So they've been battling that for three weeks now. So August.
Is that the same for the Adams Parkway Bridge? Is it a little behind?
A week from Friday.
Eleven.
So by 11 days.
I could put a plug in for those that are interested though, with Waverly Heritage Day is coming in and the pancake breakfast on that Sunday out at the airport, they're going to have airplane rides available for people. I know Mike mentioned at the airport commission meeting the other night that you'd be able to see the Parkway and fly over that. That might be a neat little, there maybe. Do some touching good.
I had a question, Mike. We had the presentation from the high school students about the sidewalk access, the crosswalk. Is that something that's going to be able to get done this summer?
I believe so. We're in conversation with the contractor doing the concrete pathway at the dog park.
Oh, okay.
So that's the project most, he's very good. He's done pet ramp construction in Waverly before. He's got the contract as well as the sidewalk repair. So we're very comfortable in approaching him. He's done good work. He's expressed interest and so we're working with him to get it nailed down. It's probably going to be in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $8,000 in work between the high school and West Cedar.
Oh, that site too. Okay, good. I just wanted to comment that I think since our last council meeting, I've gotten a number of comments from people about the road. Many people who wanted to give support for the three-lane road configuration, people who wanted to give support to the council after watching some of the behavior at the last council meeting and encouraged us to not allow ourselves to be bullied and to just keep trying to make the best decisions we could. And I also had emails and people who've come up to me to say that they don't particularly like the three-lane configuration, but definitely wanted to not condone the bullying behavior that's happening and were able to, we were able to have productive conversations about their views about the road. And I think that sets a nice tone for how we can all talk about things when we have differing opinions. So I appreciated the comments from all sides of the issue that I got.
So I have to say, I'm not going to be having a beer after the city council meeting. I have an early appointment I need to leave for tomorrow morning. I can't quite sleep in. But I would encourage anyone else, if they feel the need to take up the beer mantle, you're more than welcome to. I promise I'll be back at the bar next week. But I did want to mention that I have, I've made arrangements to have a fireworks listening post. So I'm going to be at the Waverly Area Veterans Post on Tuesday, July 2nd at 6:00 PM. And that's just going to be a good opportunity to hear how our current fireworks law is working for people. I want to hear from people kind of on both sides of the issue, people who think that the law is working as is, that maybe we should expand it, maybe we should scale it back. But I just, I want to hear how it's working for people. So that's, again, that's July 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Waverly Area Veterans Post.
We're good.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, you made a comment earlier during public comments about not hearing or not wanting more from the, on the road diet. And I guess I kind of understand the thought that we keep hearing the same thing sometimes from the same people and that gets a lot repetitive and doesn't necessarily, I think, help the case or help their cause much at all. Certainly some of the behavior last week isn't something that's going to certainly advance the cause well. But we also heard Mr. Hundley tonight was a new perspective on some things. And so I would hate to say, we don't want to have any discussion of it going forward. But certainly, different perspectives, if somebody has something different to say beyond repeating the same statistics or complaints about statistics or things like that, I think I would want to hear that, but it's the repetitive nature that, you know, we do have business we would like to get conducted and be done and out of here before late at night. So hearing the same thing over and over just is not productive for us. Just to kind of piggyback there, I think the information he shared had some factual basis to it, other than just anecdotal.
basis to it, other than just anecdotal response times are bad. That's not the case. They're not bad, they're better. So it would be nice if folks could bring factual information.
Well, exactly. When he, when the same people bring the same, say the same things each week, it does, it's not productive. It's, but the new information that comes through is welcome, in my preference.
Well, I, that was, Constitution says I can't take away their right to speak by any means. But the Constitution also does not give them the right to try to intimidate or become a nuisance or worse, I guess. And that's kind of why, now, again, Mr. Snyder, pretty well presented, a few different, in a little different format, but pretty much the same thing that he said every time. And I've seen their mission to meet with the governor and the DOT in Des Moines, and that's why I encouraged, if they're going to do it, I mean, they've made some idle threats before, and this time they need to carry it through. Give them the information because if you've seen some of the Facebook posts in which Snyder alluded to it, the DOT numbers, they gave him the formula, the exact websites, everything that they're using to arrive at their numbers, and he disagrees with it. And so it's, don't bring it to council to try and figure out, take it right to the source and figure, and find out. I would venture to say who's right or wrong, and there may be a compromise in there. But you're right, it's taking our time and meeting after meeting, and it was made clear from day one how it was going to be handled, and it's not worked.
And I think it's important to know and realize we aren't going to have zero accidents on Bremer. That is not realistic. And then the walkability study we did showed at 20 to 25 miles per hour, nine out of 10 people hit by a car will live. Once you get over 35 miles per hour, nine out of 10 will die. So it's really important to focus on, yes, we do need to slow down. We need to be present when we're driving, when we're walking, when we're biking.
Someone, there was a news article that I just picked up late this afternoon. A young fellow on a bicycle ran into an SUV at the corner of 8th Street, Easton, and East Bremer, coming downhill on 8th Street, didn't even, apparently didn't even attempt to stop to see what was coming. He's now in Iowa City, he resets a report. But unfortunately, one of the reports mentioned that the police department was mom on three-lane, four-lane. Why that even got injected into that story, I have absolutely no idea. Had absolutely no place to it. And that disturbed me to no end.
Failing to yield at a stop sign or stop at a stop sign is the biggest issue.
It could have been six lanes, and it wouldn't have made any difference, so.
You do want to caution us going too much further with this, or it's starting to look like an agenda item that should have had? We can't be doing that.
I agree, and it's, I'm at the end of my comments. Our next item is executive session to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price governmental body could receive for the property. Entertain a motion to move into executive session.